I was wondering, I wonder how many trees will suffer now. It was snowing and the sun was out.
And then it was sleeting, then the sun was out, then it was snowing.
Yeah, I cleaned the house, I was getting inside.
The prayer followed by the pledge.
Father God, we turn to you this morning and we are thankful for the blessings that you share with us each and every day. And we're mindful of those in our community that have suffered loss and are hurting. We pray for them. And we just pray you'd be with our meeting today, guide our thoughts, our conversations. Help us make wise decisions in your eyes. And those that protect our freedoms, those that wear badges and a uniform, protect and guide them and help us to do what we're told. Father, we pray all things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make beginning here, April 4th. Everyone receives minutes, email, corrections, if not, motion.
Second.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Today, payroll number seven, the calendar year 2016 totals $213,758.92. Claims totaling $173,140.24. That was 145 claims.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Excuse me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Monty.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for breakfast Saturday.
Welcome.
We have eighty-three inmates and six are DOC. And I, as I told Mr. Gerber, our, what I talked to you about, our chiller system and that, the heating system, we actually came out better than what we thought, so.
Great.
Good news.
Yeah, for once.
Doesn't always happen that way.
No, it doesn't. That's all I have.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Ed, you are next.
Mine will be longer than that.
Is this my signature or everyone's?
I think, I think everybody's on there. I think Beth even has to attest it and there should be three copies of that.
Oh, yeah, I remember seeing this on the email.
Yeah, it's, it's down the list a little ways, but it's on there, so. Uh, first thing I have, and Blake has three copies of there, is actually a request from Spectrum Engineering to do a fiber line. It's gonna start at A-hundred North at the Norfolk Southern Railroad. It will go west to Meridian Road and then north to a cell tower. And he has looked it over and let me go ahead and get your approval on that.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor? Three, zero.
I asked Blake, evidently Jared didn't get the information, 'cause he should bring it, 'cause I know there is a legal file through there, so you'll, you'll probably have some from him in a couple of weeks. You can keep one copy now, I'll grab the other two here in a little bit. Uh, just an update on our right-of-way stuff. Uh, A-hundred North, Meridian Hundred West, we're down to two. One, we're pretty sure, I did make contact with the I-Horn guy on Friday.
Okay.
I left a message for him, so that one, we're pretty sure that one's coming. The only other one up there is the Acres Incorporated, so, um, if we get that other one, then we'll, we'll deal with that one, I guess.
But I-Horn was gonna sign his attorney in fact?
I just left a message with him to see where he was at and to get back with you.
Okay, 'cause that's what he said with me, so.
Okay.
If, if he's signing his attorney in fact for his father, then I gotta redo the whole thing. I've gotta record the power of attorney and then refer to that, you know, so.
Okay, okay. I just told him to get with you again and get that one figured out, so we're, we're right on that, so. Uh, nine fifty North, we're down to one. I did talk to that guy on Friday. Um, I'm, I'm hoping to get that one. That's the one where we have offered him to, to tear down his old fence and put a new fence, stuff like that. So that's, um, still working on that one. And on four hundred West, we have three. One of them is one that, that Roy has been going back and forth trying to get this one figured out with.
Yeah, well, the one landowner at the corner of the county line, the southeast corner?
Yes.
Intersection?
Yes, southeast corner.
He had, uh, deeded his property to a LLC and then did nothing, so the LLC's been administratively dissolved. Probably he let it go because he died, so. He died and there was no estate, opened in Wells County, and the court's office found that there had been one in Allen County. So we contacted the attorney for the, or at least who was listed as attorney for the estate, saying, nothing, nothing was ever filed here, and it was an unsupervised estate, so usually in an unsupervised estate, the personal representative would deed to whoever's, receives the property through, through the will or intestate succession. And none of that was done, so I sent that to the attorney and then didn't hear, and resent it, and well, it was his dad, not him, who had handled it, so. Hopefully we got their attention, but, uh, that's where we are.
The two others on there, I will, I will try to make contact with them. I know one, the one guy goes to Arizona in the wintertime, and I don't know if he's back yet, um, so whether he's even received his, or whether he gets his mail, whatever. And the other one, like I said, we have, we have heard nothing from that, that last one up there, so. They're coming. Hopefully, hopefully they can, we get them in and everything, 'cause I'd, I'd like to have everything here by the first of May, so I can go ahead and get started on them, so I can, you know, get that base down and stuff down, so. Uh, next thing I have, and what Blake has there is the, uh, one I sent you, the contract from DLZ. This is a supplement to the original contract we had with them. And this is to do the design work on the damage that we found on the bridge before it went to construction. And it was too late to get it into contract and stuff like that. I have sent this on to Endot, um, to see if there would possibly be some federal funds to pay for this, and I have not heard back from them. Um, I, I know they sent it on to David Armstrong, and I don't know if he was on vacation last week or whatever, so. Once we get it signed, I will forward a signed copy to them and just, uh, see what happens, so. This also covers, like, like, uh, Wednesday, we're having a coordination meeting, which we're, originally, when we talked about this bridge project, we're gonna do them every month. We hadn't had one yet. It started like February twenty-second, so I said something to him. So Wednesday, we're actually having a coordination meeting with everybody, so everybody gets on the same page of what's going on with the repairs that we have to do and all that stuff, so. If anybody wants to come back, it's gonna be April sixth. It's gonna be at the construction trailer, out at Rock Creek Stone Quarry at one o'clock. So, and like I say, the contractor will be there and USI will be there, since they're the inspectors, and, uh, Endot people will be there and all that stuff, so. And we might, we might be able to get some answers on this here, whether they're gonna cover any of that, and then also actually for the repair cost, uh, 'cause we don't know what that's gonna be yet. It just, uh, did get the plans from DLZ to do the repairs and forward that into the contractor, but that didn't happen, I think, till Thursday or Friday, so. So, it's, it's moving, but it's moving slow, as far as getting the repair done and stuff like that, so. There should be three copies there.
Right, so what I see is some of it is repaired and some of it is adjustment with the services provided.
During the construction.
Right.
Yeah, and some of that, some of that we-
It's about fifty-fifty, uh, the total, that's extra, so.
Right, and some of that we might not pay out, 'cause it depends on how many meetings we have and they have to attend, and if there's things they actually have to do, so.
Now, basically, we're increasing the contract total by eighteen thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
For page one ninety-three.
On favor?
Aye.
While you're signing that, I'll, I'll keep going. The next thing I have is just to, sort of update you on the ERC recertification. Um, that's something that I have to do every year. Usually it's something you go attend a, a two-hour class and they certify you and they send you a certificate and you're good for a year. Well, this year, when they had the first class, um, they kept making comments during the meeting that eventually it's gonna go online and, and, uh, there'll probably be a test at the end of that. Didn't say anything until the end of the meeting. And then they threw out a twenty-five question test. And it says right here on the test that you have to pass eighty percent to be recertified. So, the one in the morning was on the bridge reinspection. I, I thought I did pretty good on that, you know, I should, I should be okay and stuff like that. Well, in the afternoon, our, our class to do our recertification for like our federal bridge projects, they did the same thing. And they were talking about stuff that I had no idea what we're talking about.
Title VI stuff?
Title VI, ADA stuff that I'm not involved with. They talked about doing change orders on a federal project, which I've never been involved with, you know, and stuff like that. And they talked about, um, utility coordination, which I did not have to do on this bridge project we had and all that stuff, so. Needless to say, about a week after, I got my email from them that said that I did not pass either one.
Ed, if I could interject, just for everyone here.
Okay.
Uh, I've spoken to a lot of highway superintendents, and this test was sprung on them by the current, uh, facilitator for Endot. Very unfair, totally unfair. And I, reputable people that I respect around the whole state that have shared this with me. And, uh, so what's being done here is not a, you know, anything to do with Ed Herman, but this is something that will be questioned and will get run up the flagpole because it was ridiculous.
Yeah.
It was a total surprise to everyone there, Title VI information, ridiculous. So needless to say, I was a little miffed by it all, and, uh, so we're moving it forward.
You know, they, uh, and like I say, to, to require eighty percent.
Oh, it was-
I just thought-
They, they sat through this meeting and then all once, oh, here's a test.
Yeah.
Which, that's fine, but didn't even talk about the things that they were testing on.
And we were, I, I didn't officially from them, I did request from Endot, I said, I wanted to know how many people took the test and how many passed. They would not give me that information.
Well, I can tell you what that is.
We heard, we heard less than thirty percent.
Exactly. So for the instructors and teachers in the, in the audience, y'all know that obviously it didn't get the message across, and let's look at ourselves in the mirror.
So anyway, they suggested that you retake the classes. Um, they are offered on April sixth down at, uh...
Greenwood or Green Castle?
Yeah.
Something, I seen the email.
Yeah, Greenfield, not online, not online, stuff like that. So I went ahead and signed up for the classes. The next day, I received my certificates.
Amazing.
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 So.
Mm-hmm.
I'm certified for a year. I'm not taking the classes again. Uh, I think, I think what happened was there were so many complaints that they got-
Oh, yeah.
-that it went up through Endot and they said, you give them their certificates and we'll have to work on the test.
And to know the individual that sprung this on, knowing that guy for a while, interesting.
Yeah.
Was the test on April one?
No, no, it was at road school. It was in March.
This is road school, March third or sixth.
It was in March. It was in March, so. So I will not be going to Greenfield District. I'm gonna go to our bridge meeting on the sixth.
I was gonna say, that's the same.
Yes, yes. I think that's more important than, than going back and trying to listen. When they're, when they gave me my certificates, yeah, I was sort of surprised, 'cause I registered the class and the next day, they showed up on my email.
Well, you failed, Ed.
I know.
And then you got a certificate. How about that?
Here you go. Here you go. Here's your certificate for a year. So anyway, just to, like I say, I've got my certificates for a year, so we're good there, so. Uh, next thing I have, just to let you know, we will, we'll take in the Bitumus bids at your May second meeting. That's usually when we take them. Um, I keep hearing the prices will be down a little bit, some of the counties that I've here to already bid, so that's a good thing, so. Uh, next thing I know, we've discussed this, I think Toby even brought that up at your meeting two weeks ago, for the call for projects. I just, you know, we, we've talked about the White Bridge, redoing that deck and stuff like that. If that's something that we wanna do, uh, we need to move forward with that. Um, the applications have to be in the sixteenth. My only question to you guys is, is who you want to do that?
I'm working on that right now.
Okay, okay.
And the White Bridge, and as a matter of fact, after this meeting today, I have a-
Okay.
Conference call.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I just-
So that's a good one.
We, we have to get somebody working on getting all the information for the stuff. That has to be put in, I have to put the information in, 'cause it has to come through the ERC, through the website that we do our quarterly reports on.
Well, once I get the meeting set up, I'll call you.
Okay, okay. Just let me know who-
All right with you.
Who we're gonna work with and stuff like that. So, yeah, if we're gonna do that, we're gonna, yeah, keep moving it forward and stuff like that. Um, we are signing up for desk control. Uh, we will do that through April twenty-ninth. The price is a dollar twelve this year. It did go down. Um, it was a dollar eighteen last year, so we did go down a little bit. Our actual desk control price went down about a nickel. Uh, the application stayed pretty well the same. It went up like three tenths of a cent or something like that, so. Uh, just some of the other stuff.
I have a question, Ed.
Okay.
Sorry to take the floor all morning. Question was raised to me in regards to former, um, Dust Day, Dust Control, um, customers that we've had in the past. Uh, possibly sending out a note, little postcard, uh, because a lot of people don't read the news banner.
Oh, you mean when we're signing up again?
Yes, so if we have a master-
Reapply?
Yeah, if we have a master list, we send out just a little postcard when it's going to be, you sign up for it.
Makes a lot of sense.
And I thought it was a great idea, so I wanted to pose a question to my fellow commissioners on that, because I think it would be great. I mean, it's just a service and it wouldn't cost as much to do that.
Yeah. We do advertise it, um, I don't know, I, I talked to Roger. Hopefully he got it on the website. He's supposed to put it on the Facebook page. We advertise it, news banner, um, four weeks straight. It also goes in the, uh, Ossian Sunriser.
Mm-hmm.
It also goes in the Echo.
Okay.
That's part of that whole package and stuff like that, but yeah, if you think we need to do something else, we can.
How many do you average?
Uh, about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy. Depends on the year.
I think that'd be pretty, I think you can, that's doable. You think?
Okay, so just a, a postcard.
You can even save money and not advertise as much, probably. I mean, you can still advertise, but maybe not as long.
Right, right.
And get a little bit of the money.
Most people that get it know.
Oh, yeah, right.
During the month of April. We always sign up during the month of April.
It's the difference between knowing and remembering.
Yes, I agree. I agree.
That's true, and I had a, had, you know, constituent that remembered, but didn't wanna miss it.
Right.
So I thought, you know, it's a great idea.
Twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth of March, we got a lot of phone calls, 'cause they thought it was the end of March.
Well, yeah, yeah.
You know, so we already started. I didn't even have a price there. Twenty-ninth, twenty-ninth. So, yeah, we can do that.
So I'd say for maybe, for next year?
Yeah.
We might be able to, because we still have a month.
Yeah, we still have a month.
What's the difference between the deadline you advertise and when you actually really need to know to?
We, we put the twenty-ninth, which is a Friday, and we will start the following Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's why we put a deadline, because the next Monday, we actually start spraying.
Is there a way of what you have already signed up? Do you have quite a few signed up already?
No.
Okay.
I think we have, well, five or six, maybe.
That's not very many.
No.
So, why don't you see what you could come up with and maybe get that out yet?
This year?
Yeah.
We can do postcards.
Let's do it. That's what I'd do.
That's fine.
And make that motion.
Just put a reminder notice on there.
Yeah.
Sign up for desk control, what the price is and the deadline.
Right, and the former, all the past customers.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay.
We have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye. Thanks, Bill.
We can even put, tell your neighbors.
Tell your neighbors, everybody.
Tell your neighbors.
Most of mine are, most of our are repeat customers.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we, we, once in a while get a new one, but not, not very often. So like, it's, it usually stays pretty consistent.
No, we can get really clever next year and anybody who lives on a gravel road, we can-
Oh, you're talking a lot of, you're talking a lot of postcards.
There you go.
Any new people coming to the community that lives on a gravel road, we can target.
Yeah, send them to Realtors, so they don't think that they're all snow-covered and paved. There you go. Um, bridge number for the White Bridge?
Three oh four?
I think it's three oh four. I think it is.
That sounds right, but I don't, off the top of my head, I can't tell ya.
That's on the, yeah, I think.
I think it's three oh four. I think it's three oh four. Yeah, 'cause we picked that one up, so I think I'm pretty sure that's what it is and stuff like that. Okay, yeah, well, I'll get some postcards around and we'll-
Thank you.
We'll get them sent out, so. Uh, just some other stuff we're doing. Uh, we've hauled all the stone on the stone roads. We actually did finish up last Friday. Um, so that's all done. Um, of course, we're trying to keep them graded up and stuff like that between the rains and the snows. That's come down once in a while. Um, simans, we've been working on, uh, road signs, stuff like that. Uh, been running coal mix, have run anything once. We've run some stuff twice. I actually have started my oil truck and my patch machine. There's just some spots out there we're trying to get patched back in and get them to hold where, you know, some, there's some spots that the coal mix just, just won't hold. Uh, one, and we got a spot on the detour road around the bridge up there that we're trying to get patched in, so it holds and stuff like that, so. And, uh, have cut some side itches of the road reditcher, so. Um, probably start a backhoe crew this week, if the weather permits, and stuff like that. We're getting a few of them jobs. Not, not too many. I was really surprised, but we will start working on it, so.
You know, I talked to you, you probably about a month ago, then I called Monty in regards to four fifty east, south of the bridge, to one sixteen, the speed limit sign.
Okay, yeah.
And Beth and I re-went through the whole posting on resolutions and how that speed limit got changed. And we can't find anything in like the last twenty years. Only thing we came across was a, a no parking ordinance between, um, two oh one and the bridge, but nothing south of the bridge, so. Monty's gonna do some investigative work too, so.
Okay.
We might bump that back to forty or forty-five, but we, we wanna make sure we don't do anything illegal first.
Okay.
And study it properly, so.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. That's all I have.
Okay.
I'll get with you.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks, Ed.
Yep.
Here's all your information. That was the cover of paper from DLZ, so. Two copies each.
Okay. Beth, you take your copies.
Thank you. The new Roger.
New Roger.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Hi, Dave.
Hello. So this is our first quarter report. I'll just highlight some of the things that we've been working on in the first quarter. Um, one of the big things that we changed was our, our web protection, our malware, phishing, other frauds, spyware, adware. The unit that we had before covered the courthouse. Um, we moved to this, so we can actually encompass every computer and device, no matter if it's on the road or, um, in the annex of the Highway Department, wherever it might be if it's offsite. So we have much more control over that. We can implement whitelist and blacklist as far as, um, we need to. And we can see a dashboard of everything in one snapshot. So, that, it gives us much more control, makes, keeps our computers much safer than we did before. And in comparison with, um, owning a piece of equipment, this is a software base, so we ran it out over a five-year period to see which would be the best solution in this by far, was the cheapest way to go. Um, the company that we use our antivirus offer this product as well, and if we have to services from them, it drops quite a bit. And we're able to buy this locally through FPC, so that's always good too. Um, the other thing that we've partnered with Adam McCartney, um, at the city, and we actually have been programming radios for the, like, Sheriff's Department, Community Corrections, the different units. Adam had to go to a school to learn how to do this, and he trained Roger and I. And this is a huge cost savings for all the different, um, people, the county, the city, the different departments. It's gonna save us like twenty thousand dollars that we're able to bring this in-house. It's about seventy or eighty dollars per radio. And just the Sheriff's Department alone, um, I think we did around twenty radios for them, so. And then, you know, Community Corrections and EMA and probation, you know, they just all add up just for us, as far as the county goes. So it's a big cost savings. We're glad that we could partner with Adam to do that. Um, another thing that we did, we brought our website. We changed the service provider of our website. We brought it local, ITI, um, here in Bluffton. They're the ones that help us with our website, and they're actually going to be hosting it for us. So it's faster, it's more reliable for the taxpayers plus us that edit the webpage too. So it's all-around good benefits for everyone. We had the big move with the Superior, um, Superior Court Clerk's Office. We ended up moving several different commu- computers around to make that move. We had to run a couple new network lines. We worked with Adam's Wells with, um, running a new telephone line with them, partnering with them too. So that all went well, so, big move. Um, our upcoming focus is just to work with the Clerk's Office with the, the election coming up, with the, the new hotspots that we're gonna be deploying to the, the different election sites, so. Does anyone have any questions or anything?
What about e-filing? Is there any, or, or is your e-filing coming from a particular intermediary? So you're not getting stuff from law firms all over the state?
That, yeah, we have worked with UVA about that, and the computer system has, we, we have received that from the state. So that is something that we'll be implementing this month as well.
That's coming through, how about there, not directly from the law firms?
There, there'll be a workstation out in the hallway for-
That's not what I was asking.
Okay, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking about, then.
You're not getting a lot of input from various things, but rather e-filing's are coming through-
Okay.
-a approved server out there, so you're getting it from the server instead of the individual law firms?
I guess that would be a question for you, that, that, um, is it something that we're involved in directly?
Okay.
The other, other thing is, I know we need to keep moving forward on the cellphone.
Cellphone policy?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we haven't forgotten that, but we need to get something in motion, so.
Okay.
Thinking about that.
Sure, sure. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm good. I'm good so far, anyway. We're good. It's been a good morning. Um, I don't know if you've had a chance-
at the courthouse, but if you do, it's looking a lot better, smelling a lot better.
I love it today.
It's, it looks awesome. We've added a couple closets. We have drop ceilings, new lighting, and I'm here today to ask about the flooring that we talked about last fall a little bit, of getting some pricing, which we have and which is coverable through my budget yet this year because it was bumped a little bit up for this kind of stuff. We've added a closet. I talked to Blake. He was in where the curtain hung by the elevator for a hundred years. We were putting closet in there with double swing doors also, and they, the company doing it gave us a really good price, and if we'd done that right away, they could stay without having to come back later in the year to do it. That's why we went ahead and asked Blake, and he said, "Yeah, we should use them while we have them here and have the money on, in the account to do so." So I think it's making a big difference in the way the courthouse is being presented to the people coming in. It's looking good. Painters are coming next week to get everything painted up in the tunnel and some of the other areas that we've been working on. So I have a couple, we've had a couple different, and I think we kind of narrowed it down last fall to a company that has done some work for some of Blake's stuff, and I had went and looked at their floors when we've had him come and do some pricing. Granted, these are almost a year old, so we have to take into account that they could go up just a little bit if it is something you decide to do. We have a couple of them here that I have received. I've gotten one from what we call the seamless floor system, which is where I went out and looked at some of the floors. They look very, very nice. Theirs actually did come in around two thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars, and that's for the C option, which is a full flake system with a heavy sealer in that area. That is one of their more expensive ones, but I think in the long run for the traffic that goes through there that we need to go with something that's going to be a little bit more durable.
Where do they come from?
They're from Fort Wayne. Yeah, they're from actually Fort Wayne. I also had gotten a price from an organization called Better Organized Spaces, and they're out of Fort Wayne and north a little bit, I believe. And they were down, and their totals came in at like three thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. And then the same people that did our little concrete spot outside of the door also gave us a price last year of doing similar to the inside, and it was running at three thousand five hundred and twenty-five. So the seamless flooring solutions did come in at the lower price. I was very impressed with what I seen in the garage areas that we had went out and looked at. They had even sent us the color charts, and we're kind of looking. I kind of mashed up to this one that wouldn't maybe show as much dirt, which I can show you here in a little bit, if you chose to go ahead and approve to get that done.
Any references that you've talked to?
Uh, other than Blake, no, but he's using.
Most of pro design builders, the residential, they'll put them in instead of just a flat epoxy. They put, they go in and they grind down, you know, eighth and a inch of concrete on it.
Yeah, right.
Prep it, then put this coating on, let it set overnight, and they come back in with spikes on, and then put the coating down on top of it, and then they brush off the balance and remember, and then.
Okay.
Put as many coats of sealer as you want.
Okay.
Normally two or three, and it's like guaranteed for three to five years. I mean, with our traffic, it might be extra to.
So they take it down so that it has something to adhere to?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly. So it's not going over the existing.
And is that going to be as durable or more durable than what's outside?
Should be about the same, I would assume.
I would say probably, yeah, it should be as durable. The, the, the only thing, I have a little bit of question in would be the fluorescent lighting. If it's got UV protection, as sometimes over time it either fades or yellows. That would be my only question, but I can.
And then be through the sealer.
Right.
Instead of the product, yeah.
Right.
The sealer, so.
Yeah, so that, that's where we're at there on, on that project, if you want to move forward or not. We need to probably decide if we're going to do it so that we can get on their books. We've already talked to them when they came and looked at this to give us the pricing that this would be done. Maybe they're like at Friday when we close, and they would probably do this through the weekend and be ready to work on, on Sunday morning, or Monday morning when we come in, so.
I don't have a problem with it.
So.
And I'd agree with Blake. I think it probably, in theory, would wear better because it's not getting total element exposure.
Right, right. What I've seen, you know, what we went out and I actually looked at some of the floors. They looked really nice. The process was, was clean and, and looked really good.
So if they're taking it down, it would level it out, fill in any cracks, if there's cracks there.
Right, if there's cracks. The crack will still be there and identified.
Right.
Because if not, then you have the possibility where there's that seam, that joint, it could crack through the coating, so.
Yeah, it'll always.
Then they'll color match it with a.
It'll always be there.
Yeah.
And it can crack again.
It's seen it. It's just not something that's predictable.
It always gets hard and it always.
The best part about it is the sealer they put on it will help at best. It's just like exterior concrete when it cracks, as it shrinks, and you just seal it, you know?
And I said they clean, you know, it's just a matter of mopping, just like you would regular floors. There's not a lot of, any excess maintenance that belongs to that. You just clean it, just like.
And we have all the other stuff that's done that we are going to be doing out there so that it'll be the finish.
Yeah, this would be the finish, would be the flooring out there. So that would make the tunnel look, that will snap it to make it look a little bit better.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
That's a second, then.
Okay. All in favor? Three zero.
Yeah, sounds good there. Glad to get that underway. Just a couple little things here, well, a couple things that I've been working on. One of the things is to get somebody to clean our windows at the courthouse is like not a fun project. We had a group that used to do it, did an awesome job. The man's died since then, so the company deceased, there's nothing else there. So I've called seven places in the last two years, the same places, and nobody wants to come give me pricing on this. I finally got one that I had never contacted before that was fairly new, that came yesterday, or Friday to look at the building, and I'm waiting on pricing for that to get the windows cleaned there. So just heads up that I'll probably be bringing that quote in here shortly for the windows at the, at the courthouse. But it's been for at least four years that it's not been done on the upper floor. So, you know, it's, it's in dire need of this being done, so. So that is one of the things that I wanted to bring to attention. The other is out here on the east side of the, the annex building here, there is a stairwell that goes down kind of right there by where the generator is, and it goes down to a furnace room area there. And it's just basically access for us to get furnaces in and out. It's just been there for, since the building was here when it was a library, so. But in, and over the years, these steps have deteriorated to almost gone, and the walls are starting to go in, and it's going to need new hand railing. So I have pricing coming in to get that replaced. We are going to be putting tape up today to isolate that off just as a safety precaution so that people know not to lean on anything over there till we get that stairwell fixed. But that pricing has not come in yet before this meeting. So again, that will probably be in the next meeting that I'll be coming in to get that replacement done there. I have priced getting drop ceilings in the ground floor of the courthouse. I brought one in last year, and it came in, I don't know, I've gotten two now, so I don't know if you want me to tell the pricing or not, but it was, one really looked really good after I got the second one in.
The one was, we're not sure, and then the other one, well, yeah.
Yeah, it's not going to happen. So, but anyway, I just want to know. I am kind of still working on that situation. The other thing that I have gotten a couple of quotes on that I felt would probably also make it look really nicer in that ground floor area of coming in, that wouldn't be totally out of whelm to get done. One is putting a closet area, again, back where my supply stuff is, and there's an old counter there that's going to go, but just blocking that off to make that more appealing there. I know that IT is working to get stuff to the Boy Scouts for recycling process and stuff that they're going to do, and be able to clean up their paper and stuff out of that back hallway by the IT department and by the surveyor's area. In doing that, the other option would be to open that archway back up, which would actually make that look like it's more part of the building instead of being isolated back there by themselves. I think it would be a real plus to get this done and back arch open so that people realize that there are those offices back there and that they don't feel so isolated away from the rest of the building. So I have pricing on that. Both are not horrible. Again, I feel that they're, they're very fair. For instance, just opening up the archway itself is just like eleven hundred dollars, and that's opening the archway and restoring it to be open. I feel that's something we probably should look at. I have the money to do this now for both of these projects. The only problem lies is if there's a major project that would come up, it probably would entitle me to have to go to council to ask for an additional or something on that line, and it's just whether or not you want to do that. The eleven hundred is not a big deal to do, but in order to do that, putting that closet in would be part of trying to keep that.
And we don't have a price on that?
Yes, I do. Price on putting the closet in there and all would be twenty-nine hundred. That's a closet, double, twenty-nine hundred, closet and double doors.
I don't have a problem with it, only because if you're going to need more money and time, just go ask for it.
I know, because it's, it's not something that's not needed, but.
You know what I'm saying? We don't, you don't make a habit of that, anyway.
No, I don't. I try not to. So, but that, I, I think those two things.
Because if we do it now, we wait till fall when the weather's bad and people want to come in for inside construction jobs, either way.
I mean, either way, we could prove it. I could set that money aside and be earmarked for that, and then it wouldn't be touched and would have to get additionals beyond that amount of money that that, these two projects would take. But it also comes down to if you want it done now, they're here. I don't know if they'll stay and do it or not, so it's whatever you guys decide you want to do. But fall and winter is also a good time for that, so. Or if you want to do it. So I guess it's in your ballpark.
Leaving that one up to you.
It's in your ballpark. That's why I say it.
I just think it should be included while they're there, but that's.
I think if, it could be if they can do it at this timeframe, that it would be a good timeframe to get it done, but.
I'd make that motion. Hopefully you can ask them if they would be, if it was that done.
Okay.
That was.
The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
I probably won't be back to ask for beautification things anymore this year or necessities that we need, but just will take care of the ground floor.
I would like to see that.
Oh.
That you have of the floor.
Oh, of the floor, awesome.
I'm curious about it.
Yeah.
I can bring it back over to you later.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine.
This is actually the one that, that I'm thinking would show less dirt.
This one.
I just want to look at it.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to come over later.
All in general, yeah.
And there's, yes, that's a part of it.
All right.
Okay, no problem. And I can add a signature on the bottom of that for the, for the archway and the other closets.
Motion for Blake to sign.
Yeah, just down there.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that was all I had, so.
Thank you, Bobby.
Good. Thanks, Bob.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And the move did go well from upstairs. It looks good.
And you did call me, got offered to help, and the next thing I show up, but everything is moved.
We had it done, so, thank you, guys.
You know what that one matched? Let me show you what that one matched. I got a picture or something. That, that color right there would match. This woodwork sign, no.
Don't let us distract you, Blake.
Internal controls. Is that something you have, or?
I think I have it. I don't know if Roy has it, too, but we might both have it.
Yeah, I brought copies.
You got copies?
Yes.
We'll use Roy's copy.
Basically, we're approving what we discussed last meeting, correct?
The way this is evolved is Beth and Rick Smith worked on proposed policies. I, I looked at it. I made one change because it was inconsistent with the county code on purchasing policy. So other than that, it's pretty well as they, at the time, maybe changed some minor things. But anyways, the way we drafted it is I have an ordinance. The statute says the legislative body of the governmental unit, and for the purposes of this, the commissioners are the legislative body, so the, the quick answer is if you reviewed it and are okay with it, you approve it, county council approves it, and then the next session, you can adopt an ordinance incorporating by reference that. Does that make sense?
Yep. So I need a motion. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three zero.
That's a long time coming.
We will set up training then in May after we get the resolution adopted and.
The other thing I have is that the statute refers to local governmental units, and it specifically includes townships. So what I'm saying is I think the townships need to do this, and maybe the easiest for the townships would be for them to do what we're proposing for the solid waste management district and the drainage board. That is, incorporate by reference what you're signing today. But I guess I'm asking you if you want me to contact the township trustees who may or may not know that this is what they have to do. So they have to adopt this as well as do the training.
Yeah.
And motion for Roy to do that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's a responsibility.
Yeah. I'd rather do it right than not do it.
I don't know. It looks like it so far.
Okay. All right. Beth?
I don't have anything else.
I've got one thing, just one. I brought it up Saturday or breakfast, but our county got our tax bills out. I'm sure you guys received them, and out of the ninety counties, we were number three getting them out. So did a good job at efficiency and appreciate all the employees that made that happen. So the other thing that we had last meeting afterward, we had an executive session in regards to hiring an employee to be a county engineer. After the consultation and interview process, we put forth a offer of intent to hire this individual who's currently employed, and we had a letter drafted that the commissioner, I guess me as the president, is willing to sign to hire him. He would like this letter to present to his employer currently, so he can submit that with his resignation to our position in two weeks. Nate Rungschlag is his name, and he is a certified private public engineer, so he meets the qualifications. And so I guess at this point, if I've said anything online, Roy, let me know.
No, I think you're, you're deciding today to extend an offer to hire him.
Right. So we're extending the offer, and hopefully if he accepts it, then we will put a contract together that brings him here on the terms of both him and the county, so. So I need a motion.
I'd make a motion to extend that offer.
Second.
Thank you. Three zero. Um. He would like this letter to present to his employer currently, so he can submit that with his resignation to their position in two weeks. Nate Rumschlag is his name, and he is a certified private public engineer, so he meets the qualifications. And so, I guess at this point, if I've said anything out of line, Roy, let me know.
No, I think you're deciding today to extend an offer to hire him.
Right, so we're extending the offer, and hopefully if he accepts it, then we will put a contract together that brings him here on the terms of both him and the county, so. I need a motion.
I'd make a motion to extend that offer.
Second.
Thank you. Three zero. Any other things?
All right.
Here.
I'm just making an annual request for the Miss drill association to have a national day of prayer on the courthouse.
And what date is that?
That would start the first week of May on a Sunday and go till Thursday evening. And I usually send this through to Beth, and she makes copies for everybody. And I made it at home and just bring that to you, and it's the same thing that we do every year.
And those dates are open, I assume, Beth?
Yeah, I don't, there's nothing else scheduled for either.
I'd make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arlie. Anything else, Beth?
I'm looking at my notes.
For some reason, I didn't think there was something, but it's not, it can move.
I don't see any more. Cause enough damage today.
That's enough money.
Audience, any comments, yes?
Just a comment regarding the situation with Ed Herman and the test that was sprung upon him. It's my opinion that this is not just some fool guy that is making life difficult for. This is, in my opinion, a move to justify, to legitimize pulling local control away when it comes to these things, and insert more federal and state control, thereby eliminating the local government in performance of all this on bridges and highway repair and those kind of things. I think it's a move to push more centralized control and take it away from you. That's just my opinion. I don't think it was just, like I say, a fool that is a fool. And I think you need to be aware of that and to make any kind of noises that you need to make and say, "Now, look, it's, you know, the performance of his duties is our responsibility not to legitimize taking our leave from you guys." Just my opinion.
Thank you. When I run into this individual, I'll have a conversation with him.
And I think that's a real move, whether you believe in agenda 21 and all that or not, that's not the point, it is a general move towards that. And I think this would legitimize. That's the motive behind it.
Thanks. All right.
I don't have anything else.
And are there any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.